The regular regular city council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM, May 2nd. Allow come to order, roll call.
Councilor Hoag.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councilor Lilis.
Here.
Councilor Hadrava.
Here.
Mayor Vasilevich.
Here.
Approval of minutes, city council workshop, April 4th. Approval of minutes, city council?
Yeah, there's two of them.
Oh, two of them, okay. I thought it was, uh, it was in double here. Minutes of city council meeting, April 4th. Minutes of city council workshop, April 18th. And minutes of city council meeting on April 18th. If no one has any questions or changes, call for motion that we approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Hadrava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any changes, additions, or deletions? Item, I'll just add one, item 12, that's to deal with the Days Inn demolition. We talked a little bit on that, I think county is looking for our agreement with them on that, but we'll take that as item 12. If no one has any changes, we call for motion that we approve tonight's agenda with the addition of item 12.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have support? Or did you make that right?
It'd be me.
Made by Lilis, do you have support?
I'll support.
Worked by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Appointments and presentations, reappoint William Aho to the Evolith EDA board. You missed the council meeting the other week, didn't you, Bill?
No idea.
You've had a pretty close look-alike sitting in for you, but I got that. Got a motion that we appoint William Aho, reappoint to the Evolith EDA board?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion?
Just want to thank you for your service, Bill. You've been on the board for a very, very long time and doing a great deal of diligence for the city of Evolith. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Didn't get enough punishment, eh? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. If anybody from the audience wants to address council at this point, we allow five minutes. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is approval of payroll, April 1st through the 15th, and approval of claims for April. Anybody have any questions on either? If not, call for a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have a support?
I'll support it.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. At this point, I will suspend the regular council meeting to have the public hearing on a proposed final assessment for 2015 LE improvement project, our public hearing. At this time, I will suspend the meeting and open up the public hearing.
Is this the time I complain?
Is that you? Is that you, or what?
No, it would be me, but I'm keeping quiet. I was always taught, nothing good to say, don't say a word.
Well, I'm just worried, you know, we don't have enough seating in here. That's the problem. If not, nobody has any questions or anything, I will, if there's no public input, anybody from staff, or anyone, council? If not, I will adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the council meeting. Unfinished business, we have none. Item J, J1, new business, resolution adopting assessment for 2015 LE improvement project. Boy, it took a long time to close this out, eh? Anybody have any questions? If not, call for motion that we adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion that we adopt this resolution.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 2, amended and restated electric utility facilities easement agreement between the city of Evolith and Minnesota Power, I'm assuming. What did we change in here? I thought we were good.
This is just a combined easement agreement, Mayor, that took a bunch of existing easements.
Oh, okay.
And combined all of them together. If you look at the last page, you'll see the overall easement exhibit with all the new easements laid out, where they are, and combined into one accessible document.
All right. So you just basically cleaned that up, eh?
That's correct.
So some council, 20 years down the road, won't run into any problems like we've been.
This is for the new project.
Yeah. Yeah, because I assume all the easements are there, but there's so many of them. Just group them all and now you have one. Anyone have any questions on this amendment?
This doesn't affect our sliding hill?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's existing easements they already have, but they're just through the years, you just keep piling them on top of each other. They condense them into, well, it makes, it's like a house cleaning, it makes it a little easier to understand.
They probably appreciate it, too. That's one big project.
Well, you know, you see when we got the land, now there's a covenant, you gotta get that released, I mean, this is the kind of stuff you run into. You're hoping to avoid that for whatever future expansion you might have to do there. Any other questions? Call for a motion that we approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 3, bids for purchase of lots located at 609 Garfield and 625 Summit. Well, let's just jump to the 625 Summit first, that's kind of the easy one. We had two bidders, and I guess we just go with the high bidder, Peggy Hayden, she owns the property next door. $1,111. We're a little easier to deal with than a county here. If no one has any questions or objections, call for a motion that we accept the bid of Peggy Hayden for the 625 Summit. Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have a support?
Support.
Worked by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 609 Garfield, we've got two bids and, uh, from two neighbors, but they're kind of really different. We've got one bid, which is basically a proposal that they will build a 28 by 40 garage within two years, and one is just a bid for the lot, they're really close, but these people have been neighbors for a lot of years. And I think, Jackie, you say, maybe you and Joel, because I know they've been trying to work something out for another parcel or...
So since this is on the packet, do we have to make a motion to refer back to you guys to investigate it, or?
We can just direct them and basically table it, and, uh...
All right.
They'll come to agreement and...
Yeah, we want to make everybody happy with this, so we just figure we're gonna...
Right.
Talk with you first.
Because this wasn't the first discussion that neighbors, they've been neighbors forever up there. Well, we'll leave it in your hands, Jackie and Joel, see what you can work out there, because I think you can put something agreeable together. Item number 4, proposed ordinance amending the city code, chapter 5, section 5, 142, entitled "Sports Convention or Cultural Facilities Lease," entitled "Sunday Sale." What, why don't you give me the rundown? Running out of breath here.
So what we've done is made it easier for people that want to, I would say, rent the new, the newly remodeled auditorium.
Okay.
And have someone come in and serve alcohol in that facility. This allows them to ask the city administrator for the permission to do that in this, you know, at the same time that they would put in their request to rent the facility, or maybe even within less time if there wasn't time for them to bring it before the council. The previous, uh, the previous ordinance didn't allow for that. So what we've done is just made that a more friendly policy to be able to do that, and identified what the surrounding communities are that we would accept the onsite liquor license of, uh, for renting that facility, or other facilities within the city. That's the first one. Do you want to take them one at a time, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Anybody have any questions? I know we talked about this. Because if we have to wait for the council meeting, the summer, we have one, you know what that's like? Because we ran into a little issue there, almost with the roller derby down the hip, just kind of pushing the envelope. No one has any questions, Joel, or anything? We call for a motion that we approve this amendment to the city code?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
Support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 5, change order number 2 for Range Cornice Heating and Sheet Metal in the amount of $10,635, Evolith Auditorium air conditioning installation. Is it working? Bradley wants to know.
It has not been energized yet, but this change order was for an item we had, um, in our plans separately from the air conditioning, and it turns out the air conditioning contractors are the one that did the work to clean the ductwork and patch the duct.
Oh, okay, remember. We discussed that, too. Well, Joel, what, are you giving this your blessing here, or what?
I'm not happy about it, but like I told, like said at our other meeting, is, you know, this is something that we don't know what we're getting into when we do it, you know? It's not like a bid coming for hauling sand, or for bidding something else, where all of a sudden we get a $5,000 change order for no reason. This is just something, they've been dealing with a bunch of crap up at an old building, you know, and I guess we, uh, I'll make the motion that we have to pay it.
Well, you know, it's, it's, when you get them old buildings, that's kind of new territory, and we're coming to the end of the trail here.
Well, that's like, when we walked in and I saw that the floor joist is broken, you know, nobody can foresee that, though. But what you have to realize, from our point of view, is it has to be fixed. Otherwise, everything we've done to this building is, was a waste of our time. And hopefully, you'll get a chance to come and look at it, because it's going to be a first-class operation. And there's been a lot of money, sweat, and a lot of thinking going on to get this place up and running, and it's been taking a long time. There's a lot of people that you can thank for it, but it'll be something to see.
Well, council made a big commitment, you know?
Yes.
This, the facility is needed, the purpose of it, that's for sure. Okay, can I call for a motion that we approve change order number 2?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have support. Support, worked by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And item number 6 is a pay request from Range Cornice Heating and Sheet Metal, the amount of $17,908 for Evolith Auditorium air conditioning installation.
Is this the final? I'll make the motion, now we can.
Anybody else have any questions or anything? Got a motion from Brad, the, this is the change order, this is the pay request. Making a motion, do you have support?
I'll support.
Worked by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 7.
There you go, Joe.
Wow. Well, you know...
I was laughing when I was going over this package.
Again, I'll let the mayor say it, and then I'll say something.
Change order number 3 for Max Gray Incorporated for $17,153. Was this extra stuff, Jackie, we wanted done?
This was the underlayment in the main auditorium. It is the main door on the south end. I was standing in the vestibule, and I looked at it, and I go, huh. It had this really old-fashioned, ugly plastic trim, and I said, if you have some leftover trim, can you trim it out to make it look like the rest of the building? They did. There was some old wiring and an old box cover by the stage, it was just hanging there, looking like it didn't belong. And then there were some holes in the murals on the east and west wall, where there had been some old piping long, long ago. And those were patched, and the muralist is in there right now touching those up.
You know, and again, we didn't have, we didn't have two bids, so we could go back on the other bid to see if this one was legitimate or not. You know, we're going flying by the seat of our pants on this, because it's an old building, and we are fixing it up right. And there's extra costs, and this just happens to be one of them.
Well, you know, Max Gray, they've done a lot of old buildings and a lot of new buildings for many, many years around here, so it's not like it's their first radio, rodeo, they know what to do.
I'll make the motion.
So, call for motion that we accept change order number 3 for Max Gray Construction?
I got the motion.
Okay. Motion made by Hoag, do you have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 8, quotations for furnishing fertilizer, fungicides, and insecticides for the golf course. And this is a... This is a yearly, yearly thing for us. Well, who are you recommending, Jerry?
Oh, I'm recommended by eight of the products from MTI and three products from Tesp. And we set up the quotation package so we can pick and choose...
Oh, okay.
The lowest bidder or, um, the best product that's what, what's been working for us.
Okay. No one has any questions, or call for motion that we accept the recommendation of the public works director on the purchase of these items?
So...
I'll support.
Motion made by Hoag, support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 9, resolution accepting donation for the K-9 unit? We've got two anonymous and Doug and Judy Hypel? Can you see, uh, can you see the picture?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know, Hugo, if you could get a close-up of one of the anonymous ones. It's, uh, Tim, where did you find that, in the parking ticket?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, it was, uh, obvious there were two young children who each put a dollar in an envelope with the picture of the dog on it, saying thank you, so greatly appreciated.
It, you know, everybody's aware. It is awesome, it's, it's really cute. Really, uh, really interesting, I'll tell you, everybody's aware of what's going on. Well, if no one has any questions, I call for motion, we accept the resolution, accepting donations for the K-9 unit?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Hadrava, do you have a support?
I'll support.
Worked by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 10, resolution accepting donations from city auditorium. $10,000 from Northern Lights Music Festival, and that's, uh, on behalf of the Cliffs Foundation. And $400 from Catherine and Martin Basset.
This eases the pain a little bit from the last change order.
Yeah, that's, uh, really something. Catherine and Martin, they're the honor of Dr. Gulon and his wife. Longtime members of the community, probably went to a lot of events in that building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I got a call at home one day, asking for accepting donations, and what we have to do is get a, some kind of a thing on the wall, so we can record all the donors, because I think you're going to be seeing a lot of that somewhere in the vestibule where you come in.
So Stephanie and I were thinking, when you go through the vestibule, and before you enter the main auditorium, on the right-hand side is an old frame with glass in it, where they use those things, and she's going to make up something very classy, like she always does, and start a list of the donors, so it'll be kind of permanent.
Nice.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're probably going to see, there's a lot of memories with that place, especially now when it's opening, and people start going in there, you hear tons of talking about it. Really, uh, it really hit a nerve with the community, started resurrecting that building. Do we vote on that, Stephanie?
No.
Do we have a motion and a...
Oh, I'll make the motion that we accept it.
I'll support it.
Well, go ahead.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 11, resolution accepting donation for the library in memory of Ellen Rosy from Brian and Karen Barris. Another long fixture in the community, Ellen.
She worked at the library, I can't even remember how many years, many, many, many years, she was a fixture up there.
Yeah, that's part of the history of the community.
With that, I'll, I'll make a motion, we accept that.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And item number 12, I'm just excited about this, Days Inn Demo. And that's, uh, Jackie, what is the county looking for from us?
They're looking for a statement of support for their intent to demolish the building.
Tell you what, we've been working on that for six years, everybody. It finally happened.
Can we have five personal supports?
Would they need some council action on that, Jackie? Well, I'd like to ask for a motion that we support the county on their proposed plans for demoing the Days Inn.
So moved.
Motion made by Lilis, do you have a support?
Support.
Worked by Hadrava, any further discussion? It's been a, it's been an uphill battle, but, uh, we hung in there, and it looks like, that's another one, there's light at the end of the tunnel.
So what, um, what kind of timeframe, or what's the next steps here, or what can the community look to see coming up now?
Well, the county...
I know there's going to be questions.
Yeah, so the county is working on removing many of the items that were left in the building, and there is a lot of stuff, right, Jim and Jerry? We've all been up there. So they're looking at removing some of that, and then I believe they're going to try to go solicit some bids in June, and they're trying to, um, get some funding through the IRRB, through their own funds, to hopefully get it demoed this year, and then we have to acquire the property by, like, January of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
I was out the IRRB, and, uh, they had planned all along, jumping in with the county on that building.
Well, it's going to be a big, big project to take it down, and then it's going to take some, some good thinking and something to get somebody up there, and...
Some good marketing.
Get some good marketing going.
So it's kind of unique, I guess they're going to grind it up, and really make road material out of that now?
It's like what they're doing on the highway.
It's like what they're doing on the highway now.
That's kind of what's going to happen.
Things are coming a long way.
Yeah, it's been, oh, man, what a struggle with that thing.
You know, the only sad part is, I've been going up there, you know, we have some people around it. They're breaking windows once a week up there, twice a week, I know that I have to talk to the chief a little bit, and he's got to call the county, so if you're watching, please don't go up there and break stuff. We're trying to do something good for the community, and we don't need any little butt heads doing this stuff. Because all you're going to do is hurt yourself, and then try to sue us or the county, and you know what, just stay away from there, please. That's about all I can do.
Yeah, that's all.
Plead for him to stay away from it.
That's what happens to any house, boy, as soon as...
Because there's not much copper left in there, the other owners took that out, so...
I have noticed, driving on, that there has been more of a police presence over there.
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, there has been an increase of vandalism, uh, at the site. Uh, we are doing our best to document, um, I'm requesting my officers do extra patrolling up, uh, on the site. I have been, I have a message into the county as of today, because there's some additional damage, um, that is going to need to be repaired, but, um, you will see a, uh, very much of a more police notice, uh, up there, so...
Let the, let the dog loose up there.
Let him run the halls.
Yeah.
No.
Any, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I had a couple items to bring up. This one here, we are having a open house, June 13th, from 4 to 7, at the city auditorium. So everybody can, uh, get, get a good look at it, if there's any questions, and everything should be ready to roll. And this Thursday at 7, we are having an event, a band, band will be playing, and we have one of the original band director's sons, who directed it in the 20, Major Chenette, his son will be there to pick up the honors. It's really kind of interesting, 100 years later, the son of the original band director will be up there to kick things off. It's, it should be real, real interesting event, I get a lot of feedback, and be kind of exciting, because this is the first time we've actually opened it to the public, and everybody can get a good look. I think there's a few cosmetic things we got to touch up yet in there, but kind of minor. And I hope to see a lot of people up there. That's about all I've got. Brian, you got anything to add?
Nope, uh, training was canceled this past month. I'll be watching you soon, so... Other items? Any other items?
Joel, you have anything to bring up?
No, nothing.
Brian, you got anything to add?
Well, just, uh, get a plug-in for our fire department, again, they're having their Duke Scorch BBQ on Saturday, between 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM at the Evolith IGA. Always a, a good place to go grab a sandwich and, and visit with some folks. The citywide revenue sale kicks off on Friday at 9:00 AM. It runs from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, both Friday and Saturday. It's, um, I used to always refer to this as the, one of the most dangerous times to be traveling in the city of Evolith. But, um, yeah, keep that in mind, there's going to be a lot of stop-and-go traffic, there's going to be a lot of people that aren't paying attention to, they're driving, they're looking more at the next sale that they're going to be going to, so keep that in mind, and stay safe, but please come and frequent, uh, all those events. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, you called that one right, that's going to be, uh, like you say, darting out of alleys, and nobody paying attention. Bradley, you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. First of all, our Ely Lake Veterans Park has opened, as of yesterday officially. Camping is starting, and we have increased police protection out there also, so, uh, have fun camping, be safe, and, uh, don't do any damage to our park, we've worked very hard to make it as nice as it is. Uh, second of all, uh, the county is doing a 101, Highway 101, this summer, out to the Four Corners, and that is Fail Road, out to the Four Corners. And they're going to rename it to Joe Begich, and that is a, uh, an honor that he deserves for all his years of hard work for Evolith and for the state of Minnesota, and thank you very much, Joel.
I think they're going to start that construction mid-August, so the other road with the bridge should be almost done, so you won't have two places plugged up, that's the first thing I thought of. You've got that construction, and you'd have this out here. But they should be pretty much done, and the road open over the bridge when they start this one, so... Do we bid our projects out, too? For to coincide with that?
All, all three of your, uh, scheduled projects are, have been bid out?
Oh, okay. I hope we get some competitive pricing, so when they do that one, get the whole thing done, because that is just a terrible road, going out there to the Four Corners. Oh, the smoothest part is the railroad track, now that they fixed that. Yeah, I couldn't believe it, one day I was coming that way, and you see cars pulled over, and one of the presidents out there said, he came one day, and he was like, the police said somebody pulled over in the middle of the road, and he's running, what are they doing there? Went by, the wheel on the car was, broke off, just hanging that, that's... Went by, the wheel on the car broke off, just hanging, that's where it stopped. That's how bad those tracks were, but they got that part done. Bradley, nothing else to bring up?
Not at this time, Mayor. I'm a little bit, well, I do have one more thing, I'll start it, you can finish it.
What's that?
I'm a little disappointed at the way things worked out with the, with our City of Gilbert and our offer to help with, help them with their sewer problems. There's some things going on there that I'm not happy with, I would have liked to think that we were there to help them, but the paper made it sound a little bit rougher than it really was. So with the paper, with the numbers and everything that's happened, I'm just not totally in agreement with the way it was printed.
Well, the whole thing, there were a lot of players involved, you had Congressman Nolan's office, you had our state senator, our representative, and this basically was for a feasibility study, that's what it was for. And Congressman Nolan's office was kind of putting things together, and I had a call from the mayor, one of the councilmen over there, asked if we were interested, I just wish they would have called and said, we're going another direction, because, you know, I missed steak and eggs, now Mary's morsels, just sit over there and hear that. You know, just take a little more consideration of your time, but, you know, it's up to them to do what they want, you know, if they want to go another direction, but everybody was kind of caught back when I called Congressman Nolan's office, because there were a lot of things said, and the information, I didn't look at the figures, I looked at them, they didn't make a lot of sense, but the sense it isn't a project of Evolith, I don't care. You know, it's, somebody called me and asked me, and I said, I didn't look at the figures, they said, how, and I don't know if these figures are correct, it costs twenty-two million to hook up Kinney, Buell, Chisholm, to Hibbing, and that's like fifteen miles, how does it cost seventeen billion to go three miles? So I said, I didn't look at the numbers, I didn't care, you know, they're, they're not ours, but, you know, I wish them luck on that project, if that's the direction they want to go, but I just wish they did a little more consideration for our time, because I know Jerry was over there, we had our engineer over there, Jackie was there myself, and like I say, a decision was made, and that's totally up to them, but it was just, was just for a feasibility study. And I think Congressman Nolan's got enough power with the present administration to get an extension for them through the EPA. He's been there a long time, respected over there in Congress, and with the new administration, I think they would be more than happy to work with him on something like that. But, you never know, wait for the, wait for the next time opportunities come up. This is all a learning curve for everybody, these big projects, because I think we're in a different watershed than they are, aren't we, Rod? As far as the plant, I think.
The discharge, yeah.
Yeah, and that, I think it changes the requirements for the, what is that, lead? Mercury, I mean?
There's a number of these, the boss was mercury.
Yeah, I think there's different criteria for, they're more strict than we would be, I'm pretty sure, but I haven't spent too much time looking at that, but it's complicated stuff, and getting the money is more complicated. And like I say, I had to commend our representative or senator and Congressman Nolan's office, they really were proactive and jumped in, they're the ones who called us if we were interested. I said, well, that's going to help somebody, because Evolith wouldn't see a direct benefit for probably five, ten years from it, because we're already up and running, and permit's good, plant's up to date, but that's, that's a big burden on a community, a project like that. It's expensive, and you got to, got to do it right, because, boy, you don't want to have any change orders with that kind of a project, and get fricking ugly. You'd really be in a bad mood, Joel. Tim, you got anything to add?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I would just like to remind the public, we've reached a pivotal time of year where calendar parking has ended, but with that, the blight season is underway. Our officers and myself are already fielding a number of blight complaints through our various neighborhoods, and would like to remind the public and be diligent about cleaning up your properties, just to avoid these complaints, some residents and landlords might be seeing some literature coming your way in reference to their violations of their property, so if anybody has any questions on, on what they're receiving or on the blight ordinance, please give the police department a call.
Jerry, you have anything to add?
The only thing I could add to that is, we do have the spring cleanup still going on, and that goes on until the end of next Friday.
Okay.
Not this Friday, the week before.
Are we open late now?
We're open late this week, and next week, I have to write about it.
I suppose what doesn't sell at the garage sale will be down there, eh?
We got a lot of good stock out there.
Rod, you got anything for us?
Nothing else for me.
Jackie? Joel?
Nothing else from me, Mayor.
Now, we'll see what kind of arbitrators you guys are here. Didn't, but for the audience, have anything to add? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.